Morning, everybody. We start our morning with the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. And I will ask Robin to lead us on, if she will, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the August twenty-fourth Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting. In Zoom, we have Commissioner Coyle, we have Kathy Stacy out there right now. I know she's pretty close by. We have the sheriff, Catherine Mann, and we have Major Bashar, I believe. Is that Major Bashar?
No, that's uh.
Is uh, Rich Sawyer?
Chief Bashar.
Okay. And I apologize because it's very tough for me to see from a far distance. We have uh, we have uh, Dave Banfield. And we have Jason Smith. We have um, Oh, is that Tom? Tom Tomberon? Okay, um, that's who we have in Zoom land. In the, in the room, President Chuck Nickerson, Robin Bernier. We have Jude Gates, we have Allison Kowalski, we have Leila, we have Commissioner Godu and myself. So, good morning, everybody. Uh, we're gonna start with RFP openings, uh, legal services for civil matters.
I move to authorize the Chair of the Board of Commissioners to review, evaluate the proposals and return with the recommendation.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Not on motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu? Yes, I vote yes. Uh, facilities sewer and drain repair? Oh, we have the, we have the openings.
Drum roll, please.
Long night is on.
No, it's early for a night like this. We need to do nights. Alright, I see. Open. Prom, she and Finney. Alright, RFP open. We'll review it later.
Alright, on to facilities sewer drain repair.
I move to award the proposal for facilities sewer and drain repair to Rome Construction Incorporated for an amount not to exceed forty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion? Not on motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. HVAC equipment replacement.
I move to award the proposal for HVAC equipment replacement to CES Incorporated for an amount not to exceed three hundred and forty-seven thousand as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, on, uh, yes, Commissioner Coyle?
Just thank you, Jude, for your shrewd negotiations.
Thank you.
Further, further comments? If not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Wastewater treatment fence replacements.
I move to award the proposal for wastewater treatment fence replacement to Lincoln Fence for an amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Uh, concealable armor, Sheriff's Office.
I move to award the proposal for concealable armor to Atlantic Tactical for an amount not to exceed one thousand ninety-four dollars and fifty cents for each concealable vest and two thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars for each tactical vest with an anticipated approximate total of six thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars as recommended by the Sheriff.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Not on motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're on to the consent agenda. Um, in our packets, we have minute meetings. Uh, we have a memo to long-term care services and gift fun life music. We have HR bi-weekly recruitment report. We have long-term care summit presentation, um, and then, of course, the accounts payable list. Is there any questions or comments on any of the informational stuff that we've received? Commissioner Godu?
Yes, um, I, uh, the, the draft minutes to our public meeting from previous week, it, it, it's not like really mapped out here, but specifically on those draft minutes, um, missing is my reading end of the letter. And I understand it's a juggling match to figure out how much detail should be in the, uh, the minutes, but I read that specifically because I think that it's important that everybody sees exactly what's in those minutes and it's just cut and paste because I sent you a copy of the letter.
You want the whole thing in the minutes?
I want the whole thing in the minutes. That's why I read the whole thing. Uh, so I, I, so that I would move to, um, amend the draft minutes to include my entire letter that I read into the record.
Okay. Um, any objections? Are we done? Okay, we're fine. So we'll, we'll, we'll add those. Anything else in the minutes? Uh, Commissioner Coyle?
I have nothing else for the minutes. I, um, I was thinking we could, I just have other, uh, that, you know, you went through a lot of the consent agenda, so I was gonna move on to some of the recruiting stuff and it seems like, um, just, you know, the comment I have is that the battle is ongoing, but there's a lot of great recruiting efforts. It just still, when you look at the data with respect to, um, how low the unemployment rate is as well as increased, um, job openings, it's just gonna continue to be an uphill battle.
Yeah, uh, and, and I agree. I mean, uh, it was just announced that the Yance has got a one point seven percent unemployment, so we're already, we're low. This is gonna be uh, something that is just an on, you know, continuous thing to try to find, um, employees. I think we all know that. And, um, they're working really hard in HR, so, um, we just keep up the good work there. Any other comments or anything informational or anything? If not, I'm gonna, uh, I'll take a motion for the rest of the consent agenda.
So I, I will, uh, my first motion is to approve the, um, eight seventeen twenty twenty-three, um, public meeting minutes and non-public meetings with the amendment as articulated by, uh, Commissioner Godu.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, um, on the, on that motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And I'm, my second motion with respect to the consent agenda is I move to approve the remaining of, remainder of the consent agenda, which includes an accounts payable this total of nine hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, on motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. On to reports from the Commissioners. I'm gonna go with Commissioner Godu.
Yesterday, Tuesday, I met with, uh, Allison and Jason Smith at the Easter Seals, um, facility in Manchester. Uh, the adult daycare is one that we've been supporting. And, uh, the childcare is part of our investigation of, uh, working on potential childcare here at Rockingham County. Um, and it was a great tour. Uh, again, excellent questions were asked by our staff and, uh, it's an impressive facility and I'm really pleased that we are supporting Easter Seals, uh, in Manchester. They're a great group and, uh, it looks like it's very well-run. That's all I have.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Coyle?
Yes, um, the jail population has remained steady. Um, we, they're wrapping up the work on A Block and next week, um, B Block will get going. Um, but things are, and, um, there is an effort to move the, uh, STAR program from thirty days to ninety days and that's beginning with, and in short order, which is good because that will set us up when we have, you know, basically when we move over to the building next door, this will be sort of a pilot for that for some of the ninety-day treatment program, which is good. Um, over in long-term care, um, last week was a huge success, uh, in terms of the resident picnic and the, um, barbecue for staff. It was, the attendance at the resident picnic was overwhelming. There was games, they had a, uh, flag football game that the residents could attend. It was just a really great event. Um, family appreciated it, uh, so that, it was nice to see some of those things, uh, coming back in the face of post-COVID. And the staff, uh, barbecue went really well as well. Um, Jason was at a conference to talk about sort of direction of, um, where things are going and I know that, and this is gonna tie into Jason, Chuck and uh, shout out to Emily, our grant writer, for, uh, getting together some grant. Uh, there was a very short turnaround for a grant opportunity and, um, everybody worked together to get the application complete and hopefully we will approve that today, um, to submit the application. So. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, for me, um, and both Commissioners know this because, um, my liaisons type out a very long list of what they've been doing, both Jude and Allison. They've been extremely busy with a lot of things going on. Uh, appreciate their hard work. Uh, and I know the Sheriff's Office, uh, continuing to do what they do best. Did see him in Monandary over the weekend, uh, him and Major Bashar, which was great. Uh, and I did wanna shout out to, um, to, uh, Jason Smith, um, and the staff where we were headlining the Union Leader for the Magic Table. Uh, I thought that the Argo came out really, really well. Uh, and just another feather in everybody's cap here of the quality of long-term care and, and I say that because um, my, my mom, my mother-in-law has a brother in a nursing facility in Massachusetts and some of the stories that I hear there are not as positive, um, unfortunately. Um, but know that, um, obviously, our staff is doing everything possible to make quality of life great and I thought the Argo was excellent. Uh, I'm trying to figure a way to share it because I, I, you know, I have Facebook and all that stuff, but I'm having a hard time grabbing the link. Um, so I'm gonna probably, uh, I'll, I'll still work on that, but I think that, um, if anyone has Facebook accounts or anything like that, that's a shareable thing that's, um, could be shared because I think it's, um, it's a great story. So, having said that, I'm, uh, we'll move on to, um, offer grant applications and payoff review. So, we received, uh, Chuck Nickerson last week, uh, all the information on, on the offer updates, where we're at, basically, what we spent, the categories that we, we plan on, uh, spending. And so now I wanna open it up, see if any of the Commissioners have any, you know, comments at all, um, on the direction that we're going. Uh, as everybody knows, we, we have to expend funds by twenty twenty-four, so it gives us another year. And they have to be spent by twenty twenty-six. So, uh, we're keeping track of all that. Um, we're watching everything. And I'll open it up to the other Commissioners if they have any comments that they wanna add. About the offers, Commissioner Godu?
Sure, I'll comment. Um, uh, it's an overwhelming amount of information on all these, uh, the applications and all the applications are very, uh, lengthy. Uh, so if there's specific applications that we should focus on, I'd like to take them one or two at a time so that we can say, this is the application we're gonna talk about, or these two or three of the ones that we're gonna discuss over the next, um, several meetings. Uh, that way, I think we all have an opportunity to dive into each one and make a good judgment. Uh, I, my understanding, uh, of the balance that we have, uh, that has not been allocated is a little under two million dollars and maybe even more. And there's a possibility that we could keep spending that money on uh, renovation of some building or facility of some sort that would assist in our exploit of trying to get a childcare facility here at the county and I'd, I'd like to proceed cautiously with the amount of money that we are distributing, uh, and see if there is a reasonable proposal that might come out of the daycare committee of, uh, work that could be done to bring this up to some standards that we could offer that services, that service here at Rockingham. So, those are just general comments. I don't have anything very specific.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Coyle, do you have anything you wanna add at all?
You know, I think we, um, took an approach that was pretty measured initially and I think we should just continue that approach. Um, I would be happy to. Uh, I'd prefer to make motions on, uh, some of the applications next week when we are, I'm back in person if the, uh, Board wouldn't indulge that. And, um, that would give us another week to just sort of call through some of the applications if, as we go through, any of the Commissioners need more time with respect to a particular application, certainly there's an opportunity to table, uh, you know, we've done this in the past where we wanna get more information or we're lacking some data uh, to table a, own, an award.
Yeah, agreed. So, um, glad that everyone has, um, been able to get that information. I'm glad that Commissioner Godu had an opportunity to digest it a little bit, being the new guy. Um, there's a lot of information to digest, so I'm happy that we will give out some other comments.
So, so which applications are we going to review next week?
Alright, so let me, uh, let me just share what Commissioner Coyle mentioned, how we've done in the past. Uh, so when we get the applications, they're actually put into a binder. Chuck Nickerson has given it to us in the past where we've got binders. Anything moves in, we have a whole binder of people that have applied, um, with the background information, how they feel about the program, all that stuff. So, I would imagine we would continue on that same path. So, before we, uh, approve anybody, we'll get all the background information, their application if they applied for, so that we can actually talk about it. Does that answer your question?
No, thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Godu.
I just wanna know which ones we're gonna look at so that I can look at them in advance.
Well, soon as the binder comes out, we'll, we'll find out.
Commissioner Godu, and typically what we do is we pick one category because there's three categories, right? There's tourism, there's nonprofits, and then there's sub- recipients. So what we typically do, what we were doing is eat, so say next week, let's pick nonprofits, right? And so we're only gonna focus on the applications that are pending for nonprofit organizations. And then the following week we'll do tourism, for instance.
Okay, I, it's just that I, I, I'd like to know which ones we're going to address first so that I can read them before we, before the meeting, because we're not gonna sit and read all that detail during the meeting.
No. So. So we should, uh,
Nail it down to four or five or?
I, I have my binder. I think Commissioner Coyle still has her binder.
Oh, there's a binder?
Chuck can get, uh, Commissioner Godu up to speed with another binder.
I think he's got the electronic files.
He doesn't do that.
Now, now there are a lot more applications in the nonprofit financial assistance, um, category. Um, there's quite a few. There's more than just three or four. There's like eight or nine, I think, are pending ones there.
I don't think Commissioner Coyle meant one or the other. I mean, we could, we could take whatever one we want. She was just using one as an example, I believe, but why?
But I mean, nine applications isn't so substantial. And we can,
But, um,
You, you get the gist of it pretty quickly, Commissioner Godu, as you read through the applications.
Uh, yeah, and I agree with that. I, I won't have any trouble with that. If, if those are the nine that we're gonna do, I just want them identified so I can take a look at all nine before the meeting, so.
Okay, so any more?
So is that what it's gonna be? Nonprofits?
Whatever you wanna do. That doesn't matter to me.
Because I'll look at those in that category.
That's fine, nonprofits.
Let's put it on that. Thank you.
Alright, so, uh, next up, remote training request.
I move to approve a training request for a Commissioner's Office employee LM to attend a remote WordPress bootcamp course with American Graphics Institute held October second, twenty twenty-three through October fifth, twenty twenty-three at a total cost of one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not on motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Um, on to October fifth, the O C meeting is a council.
Yes, is this something we have to do as, I mean, we can do a formal motion, but I'm, um, I think typically we just said it, but I move to limit the Board of Commissioners regularly scheduled October fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda to an accounts payable approval only.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I, I do have a little discussion on that. I don't know why we're, uh, this, we're limiting, I mean, is, uh, is Leila you on vacation or?
No, that's, that's during the train.
She's L M.
Oh, oh, that's this, I see those dates coincide. Um, as it turns, I looked at my calendar since this was brought up and I will be on vacation, uh, that week, uh, out of town, so, um, I'm good with that, but I, I wanna make sure that at least somebody's here.
But at least to a present, we can continue to do the payable, so. Commissioner Coyle, you gonna be okay then?
Yes.
Okay, so we're good.
So I'll just bring that comment into hold that day.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good.
So, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Alright, out-of-state travel and training requests.
I move to approve an out-of-state conference and travel for two Department of Corrections employees, J H and J B, to attend the National American Jail Association Annual Conference and Expo held May seventeenth, twenty twenty-four through May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four in Fort Lauderdale, Florida at an estimated cost of five thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars as recommended by the Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? The only thing I wanna say is, um, I don't know because the day, May twenty-third might represent, so I don't know if I want those guys to be, I want them to be around and wish me a happy birthday. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, facility, so change order request for GZA.
I move to approve a change order request for GZA Geo Environmental, Inc. for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand for the continuation of water sampling, interim water quality monitoring and reporting pending further direction for the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes, I'm curious how long is this gonna need to be continued?
Until they have a remediation plan that's effective. They're still monitoring, um, and there's no reasonable remediation right now. I mean, we could spend millions of dollars probably, but the state is content to have us monitor it, make sure it's not migrating. They check, um, the locals, they check our wells and so on. Right now, it seems to be pretty much containing itself to the fire training school. It's kind of sitting in a bowl of clay.
Yeah.
Literally, and it's not migrating. So for us, it's, it's nice to just be able to monitor it and not try and figure out how to get it out there.
Because remediation would be extremely expensive.
Incredible. And there's really no good scheme for that right now. It's likely they would just do more harm than good by disturbing it. So, I think until they come up with a strategy for remediation that's realistic, because even if they filter it, then they don't know what to do with the product that's in the filters. You can't incinerate it because that's what happened with Saint Paul Bay. It's just, it, it's where it is. It's quiet and we're monitoring and making sure that it stays contained at this point.
Have, have we looked at incinerating it underground? In, in Salem, we had a, a similar problem. Well, I don't know if it's similar to, but it's similar in that, that there were some areas that were, uh, contaminated and for a long time. And they have some kind of probes that go into the earth multiple every twenty feet or, or so and apparently burn it all up and get rid of whatever is the contamination. Is that something we've looked at or?
I'm not familiar with that at all. Not with PFAS, I don't know. We have monitoring wells.
And I think that's what it's for too.
Interesting. I've not heard anything about that.
I'll see if I can find the technology.
And I'll check. And, and I check in regularly with D E S. All of our reports go to them and they send back and say, you, you following the right path or we want you to add this or subtract that. We, we try to disturb it as little as possible for here.
Making it worse, right? No, I, I, I understand.
From the surface water, unfortunately, and that is ultimately the drinking water supply in Exeter. So we're like, you know,
You need to care.
Keeping a good eye on it, yeah.
Okay, I'll see what I can find out for that technology.
That would be really helpful.
Well, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Remote training request.
I move to approve a training request for a facilities operations employee RB to attend a remote WordPress bootcamp course with American Graphics Institute held October second, twenty twenty-three through October fifth, twenty twenty-three at a total cost of one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars as recommended by the IT manager.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, on motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Finance office.
I move to increase the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three long-term care allowance for uncollectible accounts to two million forty-three thousand thirty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents, an increase of three hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents in comparison to the fiscal year and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two balance of one million six hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred dollars and sixteen cents as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance and Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, yes, Commissioner Coyle?
Just very briefly.
Yeah.
Fair to say, so by increasing our uncollectibles allowance, um, then that will allow us to do more write-offs against this uncollectible amount, which saves us right on the general.
That's correct. And then that way we won't be basically doing what they would call a direct write-off, which would affect current year revenues.
Right, so we're not pulling it against our revenue for the fiscal year.
Right, and one, and one thing we do, even though we put something to, into the allowance, it doesn't mean that we give up collection efforts either. So.
But this is thanks to, like, this is ROI on Polaris Group, right? We outsource that.
Yes, they're, and they're more aggressive, making sure that we build for everything as well. And then unfortunately, science, what might happen is if the feds delay payment, uh, we did modify the allowance last year to also put a fifty percent reserve on any Medicare billings that were between one and two years as well. So there have been some, uh, Medicaid, Medicare A billings that moved into that one-to-two-year category. So that's part of the reason for the, um, increase in the allowance. But.
Thank you.
If not, on motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, on to human resources, voluntary and, and managed training program.
I move to, I move to approve the M and A training program as an American Rescue Plans Act ARPA project under Treasury expenditure category two-point-seven job training assistance not to exceed two thousand dollars per enrolled student as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, I actually, do we have people lined up for that or?
We did, but we have something else that we have to bring the floor and talk about that.
Alright, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Long-term care grant application.
Sure, I move to approve an application for the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services grant to delay or defer institutional care and authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yeah, Commissioner Godu?
I just wanna commend the staff in the long-term and, and our grant writer for stepping up so quickly, uh, to do this. Rockingham's first in this area and, uh, I think that it's a service to the county that, uh, they've done so well so quickly with under very short deadlines. So, congratulations on getting that done. I'm in favor of this grant.
Further, comment, Commissioner Coyle?
Similarly, yeah, I mean, the, the amount of documentation they need, needed to submit the application was voluminous and cumbersome and it really was a team effort, so thank you. Just wanted to echo those same sentiments.
So my, I have a couple of questions. I actually, um, got to speak to Jason this morning, so, um, I read everything on the applications. I, I believe that the program is a worthy program. Where my concern is, is it's a pilot program. Uh, and I wanna say it ends in twenty twenty-five. My question to Jason was, um, are we hiring employees of the county? Typically, in the past, I I we've seen these, for instance, uh, police or firemen, federal government will pay for the first couple of years and then the town absorbs that. Um, my concern is, is that we're going to get state money, hire employees, and then it ends, which actually increases the budgets, future budgets. So I asked Jason what his thoughts were, and he, you know, he assured me that we had three different paths we could go by. Um, I personally do not want to hire employees. Under this pilot program, because again, in two years, we're gonna have to absorb the costs. I would either like to have it, uh, like jobbed out or have, um, like like a, um, ten ninety-nine type of thing. Uh, or a job placement, uh, knowing full well. That these people that that come on board. Know that at the end of the grants, that's the end of the money, it's 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 not gonna continue, and I need assurances that that's gonna happen because. Too many times I've seen where. These federal programs, you hire these people and then, well, the county's on the hook for that money. So the only way I'm gonna support it, like I said, I think the program itself has gotten that right. My concern is, is that we we do not hire them as county employees. I I'll open it up to discussion. Commissioner Coyle?
Just briefly, I think we'd handle it the same way we handled emergency rental assistance.
Okay. That's fine, I I I just need an assurance and, uh, if that's gonna happen, no disrespect.
The first thing is, let's see if we get the grant money.
Well. I can appreciate your your standpoint, but I'm, you know, if if I can't get assurances, then I'm gonna vote no. Um, if I get the assurance. That taxpayers won't be on the hook at the end of two years, then I even vote yes. Pretty simple, so. Uh, but it sounds like we're pretty much all on the same page, I believe. I don't know, Commissioner Gado, you have anything to add?
Uh, I I think that this. The intention of the grant money that we're getting in is to outsource services. Primarily, I've seen no indication that we would be looking to hire additional employees. I would concur with your opinion that we should not hire new employees. Without the full knowledge that's gonna come out of the county budget once this program is done, as a pilot program. I I agree with that sentiment, but I would not delay. Uh, putting this grant through because once we get the money, that's when we'll actually decide how it's spent. And I think that we're, uh. Our posture is to. To, uh, use outside services to help fulfill, uh, this need, so I I have no objection to putting this grant application through.
So it sounds like the commissioners are all on board, so I'll I'll agree to the floor with it. So on the motion. Um. And if you don't mind, so the minutes will reflect that all commissioners agree that we're not gonna hire them as employees, it's gonna be outsourced. Um, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Should I do?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Thank you for your indulgence, Commissioner Gado.
Uh, well, I ju- I just wanna comment, the. The motion was to apply for the grant. The motion had nothing to do with the. A restriction. To, uh, not hiring employees. It is our attitude, I think, in general. I I would concur with that, but that's not what the motion was. I wanna make sure that the the motion is clear, that the motion was just to apply for.
Oh, I understand the motion fully.
Okay.
But my reasoning is, as I mentioned. If we're going to hire them, I will not vote to do the application.
Fair enough.
And so I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, that's the way, that's the way position that goes, so. Anyway, I think I think we're all on board now, so. Um, M and A program sponsorship? Using off funds.
I know, I think.
There's no motion, though.
Uh, no, I think that was a duplicate to the M and A.
Like related to?
Oh, okay.
Program.
So it's the same thing, it's just an added one, okay.
Thank you.
Let's do the Health Connect subscription service.
I move to approve the Health Connect Service Agreement for Software Subscriptions in one-year increments at. Four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents for the first year and a maximum increase of three percent. Uh, per year and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Sorry, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Commissioner Gado.
Is is this the, um. Is this the contract that I read that there was some dispute between. Primex and our lawyers, so what, I I guess that. I I. We have one contract before us, I thought it was this one.
Um, I don't know, um. Who can speak on this? Jason?
Uh, yes, good morning, Commissioners. I have a Elaine here who works with these contracts in detail. Elaine, did you wanna just speak on this particular vendor?
Um, this is a different vendor than we were discussing. I or that the com- Commissioners were discussing at another time. There are a couple of items that Primex asked for us to change. And they are not able to change that. That's number ten, limitation of liability, and number twelve-point-four governing law.
So I I I'm not sure that I have a good handle on. Uh. Whether we should be sticklers on this or that that we're okay to, uh. Sign the contract against the recommendation of Primax. I I don't know what the. What the total concern is, I I I I'm just, I'm not a lawyer, and I looked at the contract, I said, I don't even understand why. They won't put it in or wanted it in in the first place, so. I'm just wondering if it ought to be reviewed one more time by, uh, one of our attorneys.
Or, Mr. Coyle, ask her to hand up, I'll I'll go to her.
So my position is that the, our exposure is pretty limited. Because what this is is soft, a little, a software to work with our point. Uh, click care system. And so there's not a lot of. I think very low risk in terms of, um, you know, data breaches, things like that. Um, I, you know, it, the software serves a limited purpose, you, that's clear based on the, you can, the service subscription is. Relatively nominal. Um, they are a Canadian company. I don't see a huge exposure or risk to us, so I feel comfortable moving forward. And that's just my position.
Mr. Gado.
It it just, it concerns me, one of the items that they, uh, disagreed with was the jurisdiction of, uh, what laws would be governed by. Uh, we'd be governed by is, you know, if there was any, uh, dispute and. And they're insisting that it be governed by, uh, Canadian protect. Uh, laws. I I I I just don't know if that, this is important. I agree with you, I think the 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 liability, our risk seems low, but. Again, this is the reason that we have lawyers look at these things to make a determination and. The vendor's unwilling, so if if vendor's unwilling to make the changes that are the Primex recommended, then I think we need to have another review to see. You know, how, what what is our real exposure, just to be sure. Jason?
Yeah, Commissioner, um, just as a point of reference, our current software system that we use for our E M R for our medical records. Is a Canadian-based company and that contract, um, had language from Canada in it. So just from a historical point of view, um, I know that Primex makes recommendations to protect the county, um, however, it. The board, um. Makes decisions based on the operational need, and so, um, just from a historical point of view, there was a contract already signed from Canada. Um, and we've had other contracts signed by, um, a Canadian-based company too, so I just, just as a point of reference, I just wanted to make that comment.
I mean, so I I I guess I'd like a second review with Primax or a, uh, a review from one of our attorneys, just my opinion.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, so, um. You wanna make an amendment, you wanna make amend the motion? To add that in there or? Well, actually you can't because it says to include it.
I'm.
Uh, Fisher Coyle, do you have something to add?
I'm okay going forward with the motion.
Alright, so there is a motion on the floor, uh, and say it was seconded, let me open it up.
Okay, so one more question, if you don't mind. Uh, Jason, if this gets delayed by a week. Um, is there some consequence to operations?
No, it's so. No, it just is a, um, manual process presently. Um, and so by converting it to the E M R, it just helps operations altogether. Um, delaying it a week is not, uh, life-threatening, it's just more manual labor that needs to be done.
So I I I'm not supporting signing this contract unless it's reviewed by, uh, uh, for a second time.
Okay. So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Gado?
No.
Um, I guess I will vote yes on that, so two to one.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
May I have authorization to reach out to our attorney for review?
Uh, you don't need to because the motion was to approve two, it was two to one, so we're moving forward. Uh, Commissioner Gado's comments are in the minutes, and he made his, he made his comments, so we're we're good. Um. Let's go to C K Landmark Construction Corp.
I move to approve the C K Landmark Construction Corporation Agreement for the Painting of the Long-Term Care Kitchen and authorize the cha- chair to sign all necessary documents. As recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? The only thing I have is, um. I don't see a dollar amount, is there, should there be, or am I?
It's on the last page.
Um, in the motion, I don't have it. But maybe it's not needed, I don't know.
Within the contract, Commissioners, it's in section three.
So we're approving the contract, which includes a dollar amount.
Okay. Alright, so further discussion, not on the motion, Commissioner Gado, yes. Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Long-term care strategic plan proposal and discussion. Who wants to start that? Jason?
Absolutely, uh, happy to. Um, so, uh, I presented, um. Uh. Basically, a memo just introducing some thoughts. Um, around, um, some of, uh, aging services, um, future, um, and speaking with the delegation during budget season. They've actually approached the topic of what does the future hold for long-term care services? And, um, what what is needed for Rockingham County to serve our aging population? Um, so with that being said, um, I put forth a a memo, um, to, uh, use and also, um, a proposal for, um. Basically, an ideology of what does the future hold, some of my thought processes and what I see are competition and, um. Kind of a high-level overview of, um, aging services within, um, the county, but also, um, regionally and nationally, so. Um, with that being said, um. There's been a lot of research and work put into this thus so far. However, I would like to, um, work with an outside agency to help support that initiative with, uh, real data and, uh, to do a market analysis. To support, um, the operations, um, with the strategic plan. With that being said, this is something that I would like to present to the board and also the delegation when this is done. Um, I did include pricing, um, estimates, um, uh, for your review, if it's alright, if I move forward with, um, looking at outside. Um, entities to support that, um. But I I'm opening it up for conversation about, um, your thoughts.
Okay. Commissioners, um, who wants to start? Okay, Commissioner Gado.
I I think that we should move forward with this study. In general, and that we should find some prices and, uh. A couple of companies that, um, would do this kind of work for us. I think it's a, it's it's a worthy. Uh, operation to figure out what what we're gonna be doing the next ten, fifteen years. Or maybe even longer, and what's our, what is our vision, because I think that that, uh, elderly healthcare. Uh, that we do, that we provide to Rockingham is important, and it is changing, and it's probably increasing. The need is probably increasing, and should be at least, if we're not going to fulfill all of the need, we should be aware. That we've made a decision to not do that, and I think that we need to walk in eyes wide open.
Christian Boyle, do you have anything?
I agree completely.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a worthwhile pursuit. And data is always good.
Yeah, and then Jason, just a quick question for you, and you had mentioned that a couple of the delegation members had mentioned this, that this was, um, something that was on their radar?
Correct, Commissioner, they, um, during the budget, um, uh, two of the representatives, um, requested, um. Uh, a strategic plan, uh, to be placed in front of them. They're very eager in supporting long-term care operations. Um, a- a- and I would like to have a a real, um, uh, plan to present with them with numbers and figures and what does that look like that best serve our. Uh, constituents within our market.
Alright, very good, so I think we're, I think we're all on the same page that, uh, we should start moving forward with that. See what kind of numbers you can get, and then, um, we'll we'll, uh, take a look at future agendas, so power for dump.
Thank you, Commissioner, really appreciate your effort and support with this.
Sure, um, let's go to highway safety grant scope of work.
I move to approve the highway safety grant scope of work as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? If not, on the motion, Chris, we go to, yes, Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Yeah. We're on to department head updates. I'm gonna start with the Sheriff's Department, right in the middle square.
Good, uh, good morning, um, just wanna give a shout-out to, uh. A bunch of our deputies that were involved with the U S Marshals. Uh, and involved seven sex offender arrests and other child crimes. Uh, we partnered, uh, with the U S Marshals on a part-time basis. And it's a good, um, good relationship between our organization, their organization, where. Um, they will be assisting us on warrants. Try to pick up some of these warrants that are on the street. Uh, we did have a good round of, uh, interviews. With dispatcher, I think we gave a couple backgrounds to fill out, two backgrounds to fill out. So hopefully they pass the backgrounds, we can get these people to come back to work for us. Uh, continuing doing, uh, dispatch for a few towns overnight. Uh, we're just, just been busy. And we, uh, and I don't wanna repeat what you said, but, you know, um. When I became sheriff, I started an honor guide, I thi- think it was very important that we had an honor guide in this organization. And with the new people that have come to work for us, we were able to put a, a good honor guide together for the London area whole whole home days, so. The people really appreciated seeing the sheriffs walk us out in that parade, and that's it, have a great week.
Very good, thank you. Um, we've got Kathy Stacy, who we haven't seen in the last couple of weeks, which is here today.
Hi, good morning. Um, first of all, thank you to the Commissioners and Allison and her people. It was a really successful, uh, memories ice cream, the staff really enjoyed it, thank you very much, it was a, it's a great little perk for everybody. Um, you know, I really have nothing to report, we had a couple of big sales that took place, um, this past week, actually, um. One in North Hampton and one in Hampstead, the one in Hampstead is a, it's gonna be another Noria, they're buying, uh, gas stations up everywhere. Um, so they're gonna be redoing the Sitco station that's right near Hanifitz in Hampstead. And and the property in North Hampton, here here's what I wanna tell you. The the seller bought the property two years ago for five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. He sold it this week for three million.
Real estate. Better than the stock market, huh?
I had, you better believe it. Anyway, that's that's, that's about it, guys, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, um. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to Major Banfield.
Uh, good morning, uh. I really don't have much to report either, uh, we're just slogging along here, but. Of note, uh. Recently got a a lot of applicants, and I think that's partly because. Um. Autumn, she's been doing great and. Did a couple tweaks to the, um, job description, which was fantastic, including closing a gap, uh, about mandatory overtime, which has kind of been a sticking point. With a lot of new staff, so I appreciate. Uh, their help with that, but. Uh, a lot of the applicants we're getting are actually female, which is a godsend, because we've seen an increase in the amount of female offenders coming into the facility. So being able to have more female staff is, uh, uh, like you said, a godsend, boom, so hopefully it all works out.
And. My, thank you. Uh, let's see, I'm gonna go up to Jason Snatter.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, let's see. As Commissioner Coyle mentioned, we had our resident and family barbecue, which is amazing, it was actually quite interesting, the residents didn't wanna come back inside. Um, so this was a lot of fun, um, and, uh, they they really enjoyed it. Uh, we're sending out a survey to family members, um, not only to thank them, but also for their feedback, so we can make improvements for next year. Um. Let's see, working with the Finance Department on the Medicaid and Medicare Cost Report, uh, there are particular items that are needed, so gathering all of that for a quick turnaround early next week. Um, in addition to that, um, the magic table, we are having, um, Johnson Creek Village, a memory care community, and Dover, New Hampshire. Come and visit our community to look at the magic table and also.
and Dover, New Hampshire, come and visit our community to look at the magic table and also the IN2L devices. Uh, while I was at the, um, conference the other day, uh, there were several nursing home administrators and other community-based staff that came to me, um, and said, uh, Jason, we're really interested in learning more about that magic table, um, so we'll have more demos. In addition to that, uh, the company has reached out to us where we purchased the device and, um, said that they've had an inti- uh, uptick in, um, uh, inquiry. So just a, a really great, um, opportunity for our residents and community outreach efforts.
We got a commission, Jason?
No, no, no.
Alright, alright.
Uh, let's see here, um, resident satisfaction surveys for our short-term skills, um, our rehab unit is full. Uh, we have all of our beds occupied on our short-term skilled unit. Um, with that being said, we are, uh, instituting, uh, our new, um, customer service outreach initiative. Uh, we survey all of our residents, uh, in the long-term care area, the nursing home and assisted living annually and upon a new admission. Uh, but we do not, um, presently have a survey tool in place for our short term. So We Care Connect, who we already partner with, will be, um, ma- reaching out to residents and family members by phone, email or, um, regular mail surveys, uh, after three days, fourteen days, and then, um, on discharge. Uh, so that will be a great customer service tool for us to support our residents while they're here in our community. But also, um, after they leave our community, uh, to offer additional resources to them. Um, speaking of the conference that I attended, uh, the New Hampshire Long-Term Care Summit that was held in Portsmouth, uh, it was a full day of, uh, legislation update and best practices. But I also just wanted to mention that Allison and Autumn presented at that conference and talked about, um, some of the recruitment challenges and some of the initiatives that the county has put forward. It was a great presentation filled with a lot of, um, statistics and data, but also innovation and technology, uh, where a lot of the other organizations and counties fail on their recruitment efforts. Um, so there was a lot of walkaway ideas and suggestions from other individuals that I was talking to after the conference. So I just wanted to, um, mention that and shout out to the H R department for their, um, initiatives. Um, in addition to that, uh, the strategic plan, I'll be working, um, now moving forward, uh, looking at, um, partnerships with an R and P and we'll update the board with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Um, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to Robin.
Morning, I have nothing to report today. Sometimes.
We don't, we haven't seen you in a couple, a couple of weeks.
I don't think less last week, we'll keep it, keep it little today.
I will mention that, uh, I, I had to say something to you, I walked into that meeting, which was full, which was the, uh, the communications piece of the new building. Um, like there was a lot of people in that, so it was great. Jude?
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, I sent over a not-so-brief briefing, so I think everybody knows what I'm up to. By way of show and tell, I picked up a piece of, um, lightweight fill that we're using underneath the new building. You, you might recall, Commissioner Godu, you weren't here, but initially, the, the mi- the new municipal building was much closer to North Road. And then there was a tremendous wetlands impact, so it had to push the building back. And you know where it is now. Well, at the back corner of that, there was clay, a clay layer from nine feet to forty-two feet. And it would have taken a couple of years to, um, get it compacted properly so that you could put weight on it, or, we, um, it's actually recycled glass, so it's really cool. And it, yeah, it compacts like fill, they put a roller over it, so it pulverizes just the right amount. It's passing all of the, um,
They would have on, uh, Star Trek when they.
Sometimes it's nice to just see something, uh, you know, solid and just, it's really interesting. Everybody's really fascinated by it. But it's passing all of the tests, some good stuff, and it let us put the building there without having to spend two years trying to surcharge that clay. So it's all good.
Excellent, and they didn't find any, um, tombs, birds, or turtles?
No, yeah, no birds, no turtles, no. They're watching for them, the birds have migrated, but now they're, they're, they're still keeping eye out for turtles.
Great, awesome.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a question for Jude, um, regarding the construction minutes. I read that.
You wait till the, under good business?
Sure.
Alright, I appreciate that, um. Allison.
Hi, so, um, we have passed our initial schedule for the harassment discrimination training to our presenter, Attorney Mako from Sheen Finney Bass and Green. She's had a few iterations to that, we're just waiting for the final, um, confirmation on that and then we'll be able to go forward. Um, with bringing that back to the board and then just pushing out those training sessions. Uh, we did visit Easter Sales Center and the Adult Aid Program. Again, we had a lot of information, somewhat slightly different from Merrimack County, it's good fact gathering. Um, and they were very open and, um, available and willing to answer any questions we might have. Um, we are waiting for, um, we're working on the walking pad treadmill. We had had some rules and guidelines that had gone out Primex, it came back and then we sent it out to our workers' comp carrier. They've finally come back with some, uh, little changes to that. Once we get that done, we can roll that out to those individuals that, um, have them in their offices, waiting to, um, unpack them and get to use on them. Uh, I did have a meeting with, um, Susan Hemstree, who is with Health Watch E A P and Kathleen Lawrence from C O E H, the director. Um, Health Watch E A P are, is Susan over, was overseeing the two clinicians that come on site here on Tuesdays and Fridays. Um, Susan has retired and it was in the plans, so Kathleen Lawrence is taking over the coverage, she will be directing that. Um, I will let you know, we have, while utilization has been low, those that have used it are using it very well as far as they're there, they're getting services, um, they're, um, they seem to be comfortable with what, be, having it on-site and being able to go. Um, and I think we're just, I think that's just been it. We've, where the implementation from Cronos is taking up some time now, we're well into a lot of the heavy load stuff now and we're working our way through that. Thank you.
Uh, my first couple points actually kinda echo what Jason and Allison had, had just said. Um, yes, work continues on the Medicaid and Medicare cost reports, the Medicaid cost report is the first deadline up for September thirtieth. Uh, the Medicare one, which kinda feeds off of the Medicaid cost report numbers, is not due to CMS until, uh, the end of November. Uh, work does continue on the U K G transition to Pro Dimensions products. Um, really into the testing right now, um, trying to work out some bugs on import files. Um, which, uh, seemed like sometimes when Ben himself has grabbed, has had more success with. Um, we continue with twenty twenty-three financial statement preparation, single audits. Um, Shani Gamble did start, uh, with, uh, with our department as a senior accountant. Um, so we are back to being fully staffed, so that's good. Um, and then, uh, we're, you know, doing some cleanup work on, uh, non-long-term care receivables. So, uh, we might be reach out to H R for some follow-up on status of some retirees and things like that. So, um, again, I always say it, but yes, we're, we're always busy, but that's, that's how it is. And, uh, yes, Emily's been working very hard as far as helping out on the various grants. We just had a question from the, uh, State's opioid abatement trust fund commission. Uh, they had three additional questions on that, uh, grant application that I guess they're asking other applicants as well. And it, I think in some degree, this might be feeding into Attorney Fetties', um, kind of take that maybe thinks that we shouldn't, even though this is a reimbursement grant application, that certain portions that we might have utilized a little bit of our own opioid monies, our piece of the fifteen percent.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that should be part of what's awarded. But this is a reimbursement and it's not, this is not a subplanting of funds either, this is not a federal, it's not federal grant monies. This is settlement monies.
Yeah.
So, cause there was a question of, oh, for some of the stuff you submitted, a part of it was your, your fifteen percent share. And there's a small piece that we did in, in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, getting the additional L P N for, for Prime Care to help run the M A T, uh, you know, do services within the M A T program. That's only eighty-nine thousand of the two-point-four million, I think we put in.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, one of the things, just a quick comment on that, the only things that I'm trying to get my head around is the fact that, you know, we're really the groups in the ground, counties that are actually doing the work, putting all of the stuff. So we're, you know, we're doing this day in and day out, so I don't, can't understand why the A G's office wants to just try to keep money in state. It's like, it's needed at the county levels, we have the programs, but anyway, I appreciate.
Yeah, there's also a question of, would we not have incurred some of the expenses if we didn't know that there was gonna be a, a grant reimbursement? It's like, no, we actually spent this, this is all part of our program that we would have running regardless.
Right.
You know, of using our own monies or partly county monies or what have you. So no, we wouldn't have cut back on anything.
Um, and then real quick, um, I, I should have asked this early on, I apologize, um, that, that Pat Conway was busy, she couldn't make a meeting this morning, but she did email the, the Commissioners, I think they've even got that. Um, Governor Sanogo had named her to be, uh, one of the members on the opioid, uh, committee. So that means we have two people in Rockingham County on that committee, which is, which is good.
Is, is she replacing Tom Velardi?
Uh, yes, yes.
Cause he's moved up into the, okay.
Yeah, so she accepted, so we'll have her and Jason Henry on that committee, which is a feather in our cap. So I wanted to mention that since we just got that, thank you.
Nice.
Anything you wanna add?
Nothing for me this week.
Nothing? Okay. Alright, so we're gonna go to new business, I apologize, Commissioner Godu, I didn't wanna, I'm sure, but I just figured that. No questions, could be on the new business?
No, that's fine.
I don't know.
So you want me to start?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, so I'll continue my question, uh, from the meeting minutes on construction. It, uh, this reference to the metals, um, area being in part of contingency. Now, the first time, that was a contingency apparently because the person who bid decide, declined to fulfill the bid, so we had to go to another vendor and that ended up to be significantly more money.
Exactly.
Now I'm reading in here, it says that it was written up to be, uh, welded in a certain fashion, but it needs to be installed per A I S C. And that's added into contingency, so I, is it another eighty thousand dollars? I'm trying to understand what that process was all about.
Overall, I've had to still let the two-hundred thousand, it's still at the potential change order level, we haven't seen it all finalized yet. I think they're still negotiating somewhere. So it's still potential.
Potential change order.
They're just, they're just kinda giving us a heads up that it will be coming.
Okay. I just wanna understand.
Yeah, no, absolutely, thank you.
Thank, uh, alright. No, that, that's all I have on that subject, but I have two other subjects, so.
Alright, so why don't you, since you've got the floor, go right ahead.
Okay, so I, I have two motions that I'd like to make, uh, relative to the letter that I read last week.
Yeah.
And the first motion is that I request that we have our legal counsel review the procurement process of our solar farm and advise us accordingly.
Okay, on the floor.
Nobody wants to second that?
Oh, second, so the motion dies.
Okay.
What's the next thing you got?
Uh, the, the second thing is that I request that we reach out to Harvey Construction uh, and point out that there are some agreed-upon provisions in our contract regarding, um, reporting. And that we ask that they fulfill those obligations, uh, completely. And note to them that it's not complete so far.
Uh, further comments at all? Alright, so hearing none, um, I, I should probably clarify, just going back on, on your motion, Commissioner Godu, you know, I did reach out, um, to the delegation members that are watching the building, uh, issue, um, and they had, had no concerns. Um, and so that's why I just felt that, um, it wasn't really necessary. I didn't wanna spend extra money on something that I, I didn't think was gonna produce anything. That's my opinion, and anyway.
You, you understand that I.
Oh, I, I fully understand your disagreement, yeah, no doubt.
Uh, it's not the delegation's responsibility or authority to, uh, to be managing this part of the project. And we did not get any competitive bids, that's my whole concern, that we have no competitive pressure on this project. And, uh, that bothers me a lot.
Right, but just for clarification, because we've said it at least eighteen times now, this is not a county vendor, I just went through Harvey, a private company. If you can't figure that part of it out, you keep selling them to no, no bids. If bids, you're, you're misleading people to think that the county was obligated to do bidding when it's not a vendor, and we keep telling you that and you wanna, you wanna.
Okay, so.
Hold on a second. You wanna sell a story that really is misleading, in my, in my opinion. And we've told you this three or four times. So I get the fact that you have made a difference in the opinion and that's, that's fine, you know, that's not a problem. But what I will not do is, I will not tell a story that, um, that's for the public, that's misleading, um, because that's, that wasn't facts, and anyway, go ahead.
Okay, so just to be clear, I, I, the county did not hire that vendor.
No.
Uh, they assigned it to Harvey.
Yes.
Harvey's required by contract to bid out all of the subcontractors. They did not because the county told them to use revision without any competitive bidding. And so Harvey didn't bid it either, and that's where, somebody should have bid this. And nobody's bid this, Harvey could get a sweet-eyed deal for ten billion dollars and you, you, you put in the price and, you know, nobody's even checking the price. So I'm not telling a story, this is accurate.
Yeah.
But we can differ on that.
Commissioner Coyle, do you have anything you wanna add at all?
Mr. Chairman, we've discussed this issue, we've argued this issue, the motion was on the floor, we took a vote, I think it's.
Okay, any other additional new business at all? Yeah.
I don't know if it is not.
We have two ideas.
Yeah, I have three, I have three, there are three walk-ins actually. One was, so I'm gonna make those motions if I can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I move to approve an inmate administrative transfer dated August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, transferring one inmate to Merrimack County Department of Corrections, one inmate from Coas County Department of Corrections and one inmate from Merrimack County Department of Corrections pursuant to New Hampshire RSA thirty-dash-B twenty-one as recommended by the superintendent.
Second, motion was made in seconded, any discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu, yes. Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes, long-term care, walk-in.
I move to authorize the access, uh, to the direct support worker payment program funds offered by the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services for recruitment, retention and training in the amount of sixty-two thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. And authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? Hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu, yes, I vote yes, okay.
And there's one further motion, Commissioner, Chair Chello, it's with respect to the M and A training program. There's an individual who, uh, a individual who has, is going to a different program. It's, has a, uh, program, M and A program lined up. So we're, I'm going to be making a motion to approve the use of ARPA funds to fund that, uh, training program. And so with that, I move to approve funding the M and A training program costs through Manchester Community College for employee C D as an American Rescues Plan ARPA project under Treasury expenditure category two-point-seven job training assistance, not to exceed one thousand eight hundred dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Sorry, motion was made in seconded, I need proper discussion. If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu, yes, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Then I vote yes, okay, so Allison, you're up.
No, I think that was it, I didn't know, I didn't know if Jason had gotten it to Commissioner Coyle, so thank you so much.
Alright, any other new business? Seeing none, I'm gonna open this up to public comics, anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Raise your hand, do it. All set? Last call. Um, no one from the public coming forward. Um, so now we're going to a non-public? We have a non-public?
Yes. Jason, you have the non-public.
None, none of those on the agenda, right? We have no non-publics. Okay, so then I will.
This, I think they want to talk about this, Jason.
In non-public?
Yes, because it has smooth wages.
Okay. So I guess there is a non-public.
Okay, I move to enter into non-public pursuant to ninety-one A colon three with regards to personnel matters.
Same motion has been made, seconded, um on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
And I hope, yes, so thank you, everybody. Hope everybody has a great day. We're going into non-public. Okay, Commissioner Coil?
Yes, we're back in public session. I move to make two uh motions. Um, my first motion is uh. I propose allocation of New Hampshire Home and Community-Based Services Direct Support Worker Payment Program. Um, for proposed bonuses as outlined in the. Um, spreadsheet totaling sixty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second, so a motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Just want to point out that this is a grant from from the state. It's uh not coming from our budget, but um. So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Then I vote yes. Okay, and then the second, last motion?
Yes, I per- propose utilization of five thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars in ten cents. From um the American Rescue Plans Act expenditure category six point one revenue replacement. Um, for one-time bonuses for two uh. Two long-term assisted living positions. As recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources. Senior Director of Finance and uh Long-Term Care Administrator.
Motion has been made, wait, and seconded, um discussion? If not on motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Then I vote yes. And I think that's that's all that's, it's one of us, so.
So moved.
Second to adjourn, uh all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimously. We are adjourned. Alright, have a good day, everybody.